All right, thanks for all of your patience with us. We're going to call this hearing to order. I'm Leo Asanshett, Chair of the Public Utilities Commission. And joining me tonight are my fellow commissioners, Naomi Kuaie and Kalid Yos. And we also have the acting Executive Ops Consumer Advocate, Dean Nishina, who will also be testifying tonight. This hearing is being recorded, and we will later be transcribing it by a court recorder. So there'll be a transcript, a full transcript of everything that is recorded tonight. We also have a virtual option. We're allowing the public to participate in today's hearing virtually, online via WebEx platform as well as by telephone. So just a reminder, anyone who wishes to testify here in Carson, please make sure you sign up at the table with our staff where the folks came in. They will then send us these slips that they will call you from the slips in the order that you sign up in. For those on the WebEx, if you wish to testify, please notify us via the chat function by sending your name, first and last name to the host and indicating that you would wish to testify. They will then take the list and then hand that list over to me, and I will call upon them at the appropriate time. For those participating by telephone, we will call upon each of you individually. Our host will unmute you, and then we'll try to call out. I'm not sure how, if your phone number shows up, or if sometimes it just has user. User will just figure out a way to identify everyone that's calling in by phone that wishes to testify. State law requires that the commission hold a public hearing whenever a public utility proposes a rate increase. Kauai Island Utility Cooperative, or KIUC, or the applicant, has requested a general rate increase, revisions to its rate schedules, and changes to its tariffs. KIUC requests are described in detail in its application, filed on December 28, 2022, and in the hearing notice. In general, KIUC is requesting the commission's approval of the following: A revenue increase, an increase of $16.7 million in its electric revenues for approximately 9.42% over the pro forma total electric revenue amount of $177 million at present rates based on the 2023 test year. They are also requesting revised rate schedules, revisions to KIUC's rate schedules, including combining schedules L and P, which is for large power primary service and large power secondary service into a new schedule LP. They are also requesting tariff changes, changes to KIUC's existing tariff, KIUC Tariff Number 1, as well as changes to its depreciation rates and to its existing energy rate adjustment clause mechanism. Also, they are requesting recovery of the lost gross margin regulatory asset, recovery of the balance of the lost gross margin regulatory assets established by decision and order number 37252, filed on July 31, 2020, in PUC docket number 2020-0088, over a 10-year amortization period. They are also asking recovery, or requesting recovery of the pension regulatory asset, recovery of the balance of the regulatory assets resulting from the pension tracking mechanism established by decision and order filed on September 9, 2010, in docket number 2009-0050, over a 10-year amortization period. And lastly, they are requesting other relief as may be just and reasonable under the circumstances. Tonight, we are hearing, we are holding this public hearing for docket number 2022-0208. The purpose of this hearing is for the commission to take testimony from the members of the public, not to answer questions about the application. However, both KIUC and the consumer advocate will be here after the hearing if you want to talk to them about the application and if you have questions of them. So let me also note at this time, the scope of this public hearing is limited to the issues listed at the outset of the hearing. So in other words, those items that KIUC is requesting approval from the commission of, right? So that's what's in the application. That's all we can, you should be testifying on, on the items in the application and the requests that KIUC are making. So the ground rules for testify. The applicant will be given seven minutes to discuss their application, and the consumer advocate will be given seven minutes to explain its role in the process and present and present any testimony. All other testifiers will have two minutes to present testimony at this hearing. Please note that testifiers may not give any, give all or any portion of their allotted time to another testifier. And you can also submit your comments in writing to the commission by email or by regular mail. So we're going to ask you to summarize here. You can provide those testimonies to us, and you can either do it via email at puc comments@hawaii.gov, or you can do it the old-fashioned way and snail mail it to us at the Public Utilities Commission, 465 South King Street, Room 103, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96813. And we'll have that information back at our staff table as well. Please, if you're providing us comments in writing, either by email or by snail mail, please reference the docket number again. The docket number is 2022-0208. That will help us facilitate making sure that it's placed into that docket on the record, for that record. So more ground rules. If you are testifying in person this evening or virtually, at the beginning of your testimony, please identify yourself, state whether you are testifying on behalf of an organization or as an individual, and state whether you support or oppose the applicant's request, and then go into a summary of your testimony. For those who are participating virtually, by WebEx or by phone, as a general rule, please mute yourselves if you are not speaking. For those who are participating by WebEx, again, if you wish to testify, make sure you click on the chat function, let our host know that you want to testify, and then the host will acknowledge that request and send those names over to us. For those on the phone, we will then, we will also mute you at the time being, and then at the appropriate time, we will unmute you folks, and then we will have you identify yourselves and provide your testimony. Okay. So the order that we're going to take testimony is, first from KIUC, then the consumer advocate, then the general public. Those who are here in person wishing to testify will go first, those who are on the WebEx, and then lastly, folks who are calling in via phone. So with that, let us start with KIUC, Mr. Visser. You need your up. The mic is here. You can use it. If you're going to walk around, just make sure it's lit up.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, chaired commissioners, and thanks, everybody, for here for the meeting today. We are a cooperative, and we do appreciate the attendance of our members. Real quick, we have many of our elected board members here. If board members of KIUC can just wave their hands, they can see who they are if you have any questions. Thank you, board members. I want to quickly go through a few of the accomplishments of KIUC since our last rate case in 2010. A little background, this will all be on our website tomorrow, kiuu.clopp, so you don't have to take notes on anything. We recently reached 70% renewable in 2021. We're currently down to about 60% this year because of some changes in the way the state measures renewables and some little increase in sales. But we're leading the state in renewables. We're also leading the state in having the lowest rates over the last 11 months, which is a pretty significant accomplishment for the co-op. We're 72% higher than Oahu when we were formed, and we've been as much as 17% lower than Oahu in recent months. Reliability's been the best amongst the best in the state over the last several years, and KIUC is recognized throughout the utility industry as a leader in renewable energy development and deployment. Finally, as a cooperative, since our last rate case, we've refunded over $20 million of patronage capital to our membership. And that's a nice part of being a co-op, because that's in essence what an investor-owned can do for dividends, but it all stays right on Kauai. This chart here, just to spend a minute on, and it's, again, this will be available, but this is just showing since 2010, our last rate case, we had 7.9% renewable over in the green. We've risen up to 70%. And what's important to a lot of people in this room, you can see when we were low renewables, we had significant exposure to oil price changes with our rates going as high as 46% one year, and then they dropped back down to 35% depending on the, how much oil's pricing are. Even over the last couple of years, with the Russian invasion of Ukraine and oil pricing going sky-high on the other islands, we've been able to maintain fairly flat rates now because we're much less exposed to oil. Big part of why we were formed and it's actually delivered in saving money for all our membership. Next slide, please. This chart, the important part here is the black line. This is how much Kauai's rates have changed over the last 12 months with the oil. And you can see we've been right about a 0% increase. If you look at all the other islands over the last year, they've risen as high as 35%. Most of the islands have risen by about 20%. Again, it's because of all the renewables we have here in Kauai. Next slide, please. This is our first rate case since 2010. It's the second rate increase. KIUC has applied for since we were formed. $16.7 million in increased revenue we're requesting, and that's a 9.42% increase in electric revenue. That 9.4, where that comes from is that's comparing in 2023 for the entire year, what our rates would be with and without the rate increase. And they go up by 9.42% overall. And that's pretty much spread equally throughout our customer classes. Next slide. Why is a rate increase needed? Well, since 2010, we've had essentially flat sales. They've only gone up a total of 4.9% over that whole time, so 0.37% a year over that period. And inflation during that timeframe's gone up about 37%. So with any business, if you've got inflating costs and flat sales, eventually your rates can't keep up with it, and we have to do the rate increase request. During that period, our operation and maintenance costs have increased $10.8 million. $3 million increase has been for endangered species compliance costs that are dealing, taking care of the bird obligations, turtle obligations, and other areas related to endangered species compliance. We had lost gross margin. We deferred $12.8 million of revenue during the COVID periods, and that was to prevent us from having to do a rate increase right in the middle of COVID. Those costs didn't get passed on, but now they're subject to requested approval as we go into the rate case going forward. And depreciation rate study increased about $2 million, just a reflection of what our asset lives are for our investments. A lot of that's been in IT. And we have some modification to our energy rate adjustment mechanism. That's how we recover fuel costs. And that adjustment basically reflects changes in our dispatch when we had so much more renewable generation. Finally, without the rate increase, we projected we had a negative net margin, which is the equivalent for a co-op of net income of $7.1 million. So we just, we would not be able to meet our lender requirements at that without the rate increase. Next slide. How have we avoided a rate increase this long? Well, it's been many factors, and again, relatively flat sales, increase in costs, and inflation. Part of it's been staffing. We've reduced our staffing from 163 to 143 since we were formed by efficiencies and technology. We've restructured a lot of our debt, taken advantage of low interest rates, and changing the terms to save us about $3 million a year and about $5 million in actual payments, which has helped stretch out the period. We applied for and received a $2.8 million paycheck protection program during COVID, and I talked about the lost gross margin of $12.8 million. This is just looking at where our margins has been running since 2010. It's hard to see, but we've always been around the $8 to $10 million level. This is starting in 2020, and the yellow line is all the growth, lost gross margin we received. And what the point is on this, without the lost gross margin, we would have had negative income back during the COVID year and very low in 2021 without the lost gross margin. So all those revenue has been deferred. We didn't recover it, and it went into our financial statement. We didn't get any cash. And now we're requesting to amortize that over 10 years in our rates. So what would happen if we didn't get a rate increase? I talked a little bit about our lender requirements, but we have required financial ratios we have for me to be able to borrow money. I'll just wrap this slide up. And without that, the $7.1 million, we would have a debt service coverage ratio of 0.98, which does not meet our minimum requirement to access the capital market. That would give us no ability to access funds if there was a hurricane or just for our general improvements in transition to renewables. Couldn't keep up our tree trimming. Service reliability would reduce, and we have a real hard time maintaining our compliance with our endangered species protection requirements. So that's as much as I can get to in this hearing. Again, this is all out there on the web, and will be available for questions. And thank you for indulging me for a minute. It's all extra. Thank you, Mr. Visser. Next up is the consumer advocate, Mr. Nishina.
Oh, oh, sorry. Aloha, good evening, Chair Asanshett, Commissioners Kuaie and Yos, members of the community. My name is Dean Nishina. I am the Acting Executive Director for the Division of Commerce, excuse me, Division of Consumer Advocacy in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We're also referred to as the consumer advocate. The consumer advocate represents the interests of consumers in public utility matters by advocating for reliable utility service at reasonable customer rates. I am here this evening to listen to the consumers' comments and concerns regarding Kauai Island Utility Cooperatives, or KIUC, requests for approval of an overall revenue requirement increase that has already been described by Chair and Mr. Visser with respect to the $16.7 million overall increase, which is approximately 9.42% over estimated revenues. As already mentioned, KIUC's last rate case was filed in 2009, and KIUC now asserts that there are various factors that justify the proposed rate increase, including, but not limited to, increasing expenses, many investments made since its last rate case, and its request to recover lost gross margin due to COVID-19 impact and its pension tracker mechanism. If approved, the rate increase would allow KIUC to achieve a debt service coverage ratio of 1.75, which will be 50 points higher than the minimum ratio required under KIUC's debt covenants. The consumer advocate intends to take an independent look at KIUC's proposed rate increase of over 9% and its other requests in the application to determine whether those requests are reasonable. We will evaluate whether there is a justified need for the proposed increases in rates and whether the proposed rates are just, reasonable, and in the public interest, and necessary to ensure the provision of reliable service. As part of our analysis, we will conduct a discovery where we will request additional data and information to evaluate KIUC's support for the requested rate increase. While we have begun our investigation, we have not completed our analysis and are not able to state a position on the merits of KIUC's request at this time. After completing our review, we will submit the results of our analyses and recommendations to the Public Utilities Commission, where additional procedural steps, such as an evidentiary hearing in Greece, may be required to assist the Public Utilities Commission in reaching their final decision on KIUC's requested relief. Tonight, however, we are here to listen to the community's concerns and comments regarding the proposed rate increase. Since the commission will ultimately should rule upon the reasonableness of KIUC's request, we encourage the community to express their opinions and concerns to the commission and our office regarding KIUC's proposal and the impact that the requested relief might have on you. Your input is important, because only you can tell us what effect KIUC's proposal may have on you and the businesses you may represent. This will assist the consumer advocate and the Public Utilities Commission in our work. As we move forward, please feel free to contact the consumer advocate's office at any time to share your thoughts, concerns, and questions regarding this or any other utility matter. For those of you who might be interested, our contact information, our, I'll give you the easy email address. It's dca@dcca.hawaii.gov. Our mailing address is PO Box 541, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96809. And if you want to call, feel free to call 808-586-2800. And with that, I conclude my testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to offer these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Nishina. Okay, we'll start with the public that have signed up. And first, I will call David Paulson. Mr. Paulson?
Thank you. My name is David Paulson. I am an individual. I am not affiliated with any other--
Mr. Paulson, you want to turn that mic on all the way up?
My name is David Paulson. I am an individual. I'm not affiliated with any group or organization. I would like to testify that I hope that the rate increase will be mitigated as much as possible. I think the KIUC goal should be to provide electricity at a competitive price. And the state of Hawaii, I know, is pushing for greener energy, and that's a noble cause. But if we have to choose between actually providing electricity and burning natural gas or some other fossil fuel, I would recommend considering burning fossil fuel so that we do not wind up like California with ruling brownouts. My personal electric costs have increased approximately 12.5% in the year, last year or so. And it looks like, from what I read on the material that was handed out, that residences are expected to absorb the bulk of another increase. I would like that to be reexamined, if that's possible. I think it's important that we focus on containing costs, and anything that can be done in that area would be much appreciated, I'm sure, by most of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Next up is Rando Francisco. Mr. Francisco?
Um, I just need to get more information clarification.
Okay, and feel free to write in to us when you get that information. All right. Next is Elizabeth Scamahorn. Ms. Scamahorn? Take your time. Make sure that mic is off.
Hi, commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Scamahorn, and two people here. I don't know how to crunch numbers. I really appreciate Mr. Visser's presentation. I've lived here most of my life, and I remember, probably it was before 2010, when our rates were very high, and then we became a leader in the state for renewable energy. And I've watched us build, and I've been very proud of us as a co-op. What I don't understand is, I thought a co-op was to get the community together, to serve us the best way we can have our rates. And yet, a 9.5% rate increase, I believe, is too much for one year. I know that our population, from when I moved here, it was 32,000. Now it's over 76,000. And I wonder if some of those funds can come from new entities on the island, new commercial entities, new corporate entities. I know that sometimes you have to pay a fee to start a service. And when I looked at the charts that he showed in the COVID years, of course, electricity would go down in the COVID years. The tourists weren't here. That seems illogical to prove that it's just the rates that we don't have or need. So I'm opposed to it. I do understand that there's some difficulties and debts that have to be paid, but I think I don't understand why we're supposed to be the leader in the state. We're the only island that's a co-op. And yet, we're going to go as high as Oahu? It doesn't make sense to me. Thank you. Oh, that's my time.
Perfect timing. Thank you, Ms. Scamahorn. Next, Gary Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I was going to give you a detailed presentation, but because of two minutes, I just submitted in writing via the email. I just need to say that my entire testimony is going to be based on why this co-op was formed. I was part of the group that created this, lobbying for it, ensuring that the protections were for the members of the co-op, not to pay management outrageous salaries, and also not to have mismanagement. What I'm going to present in writing will show specific mismanagement by the trustees and by management. On other areas, management has done an outstanding area, outstanding job. But on the areas I'm going to cite, it's complete mismanagement. So I'll submit my statements in writing and support it with evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Next, Walt Barnes. Mr. Barnes?
Thanks for making me feel younger with these small, old chairs.
I'm having the same, same feeling walking into these cafeterias.
Aloha, Chair, Commissioners, Staff. I am Walt Barnes, a resident of Waialua, testifying for myself. I support KIUC's application for a rate increase. Rate-making is somewhat less interesting for a cooperative, specifically in this case with debt service coverage ratio, DSCR, rate-making. By the numbers, KIUC's application is clearly justified. But your duty is to go beyond the numbers. KIUC's operating model is inherently lean. Since its transformation from IOU 20 years ago, KIUC has reduced staffing, management, and costs. Beholden to no shareholders for dividends, KIUC has no interest in an inflated cost structure or unnecessary capital expenditures to increase the I in ROI. Comparing utility prices across Hawaii-- Comparing utility prices across Hawaii over the last 20 years clearly demonstrates the cooperative model minimizes price. The cooperative utility model is simply pono in Hawaii. Community priorities direct strategic planning. Accountability to the members keeps rates as low as practical, and any excess margins are returned annually as paid for each capital benefits. Every service request is treated as if the utility owner is affected. But no matter how frugal the organization is, eventually, in the face of rising operating costs, rates must be revised. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Next, I have Dan Giovanni. Mr. Giovanni?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Thank you.
Thank you. All the way up. I'm Dan Giovanni. I'm testifying for myself, a resident of Kauai and Makahoe and a member of KIUC. Thank you, Commissioner Asusio, Commissioner Kauai, and Commissioner Gilch for coming to Kauai this evening. I'm testifying in support of KIUC. My reasoning is based in part on my experience, having worked in the electric power industry for over 45 years, having participated in several rate cases for multiple utilities on occasion. I find that rate cases are never comfortable, they're always complicated, and the real benefits can be seen in the details. And to that effect, I thank the Consumer Advocate and his consultants for their participation in this process. I think that that will be very beneficial for the Commission. I think that the primary concern I have for not approving this rate case, or a good portion of it, based on the practices of electric utilities around the world, is that it might invite deferred maintenance, which would be catastrophic on the island grid. So I encourage you to take that very seriously, because I think that when it comes to island grid utilities, Kauai is blessed to have a gem of a utility, and its performance has shown over the last 12 years. Thank you.
Next, I have Adrian Sukiyama.
Hello. My name is Adrian Sukiyama. I'm a resident here. I lived here all my life. Thank you for being here. However, I oppose this 9.4% increase because it is very high for each resident who already make it in the economy that we have today. We do have one of the highest rates. I just moved back from Maui, and I know that the rates here are higher, and I've been very diligent about keeping up with it. I'm sorry I'm not up to par with understanding numbers and how operations work, but we're already severely impacted with living here. A 9.4% increase in having electric, not just for my family, but for many other families, will be really grave. There's so many problems with homelessness, and I hate to see more people on the streets because they can't pay for surviving in the household and keeping electricity. That rate would really impact many, many, many people. So I'm pleading with you today, the PUC, to vote against this application. It will lead into more anguish and more problems, maybe not for operations with KIUC, but I'm sure that we can find a better solution and not have such a high increase. So I beg you to please disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sukiyama. Next, Dennis Isaki. Mr. Isaki?
Hello. Commissioners and members of the public, I think you shut down part of my testimony by limiting to only a rate increase. In a way, I've been involved with KIUC since day one. With all due respect to my friend Garrett Rodriguez, if he's still around, I think the employees are very dedicated, most of them anyway. We felt a big equity buildup since day one, I think it was over $100 million, started with zero equity in 2002. If I recall, the old rate structure favored the other petroleum, few rate structures went up, then the utilities made money. And now with all the renewables, you don't get that benefit. And you don't have the rate fluctuation also. So it's not unreasonable. KIC has given back the pet cap refunds for a bit. I don't know the exact figure, but it's given back millions and millions. And any margins that they may make due to any rate increase or for any reason will pay in account of the members, the ratepayer members. So I think it's not unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isaki. Next, Pires Bonteir.
First, I would like to thank you for convening this hearing. I have two simple questions. You've seen a lot of statistics, and for most people, they are difficult to understand, to put it mildly. So I have two simple questions. One, can you break it down for us, why electricity in Hawaii, it's four times the national average? Let me repeat that, four times. I used to run a business, and if I was four times more expensive than the competition, I would have been out of business in no time. So, and it cannot be justified by the fuel cost, because the fuel did not increase four times. Yeah, granted, the Hawaii's more, cost of living is more expensive, higher, but it's, again, not four times. Second question is, you are supposedly the owner of this cooperative, yet the decision is to be approved or made by Public Utility Commission. In other words, you don't own it, you know? If they make the decision, if you can have this, that, or the other, so why is it not this put to a vote? Would make sense that, you know, and if you vote wrongly, well, it's on us, the owners, you know? So those are my questions. I would appreciate if I can get some answers to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonteir. Next, I have Nadeline Bonteir. Do you wish to testify? Next up, Steve Parsons.
Aloha, Commissioners and KIC board members and CEO. My name is Steve Parsons. I'm testifying on behalf of Kauai Climate Action Coalition, and we are generally supportive of the rate hike. However, we would encourage more public awareness and a concerted effort, maybe even a campaign, to completely electrify Kauai as fast as possible to increase the amount of electricity that's sold and potentially even break rates down or keep them more stable. Speaking of rebates, I love some of the rebates that you have, but I'm encouraging more for potential EVs, e-bikes. There's a lot of new technology out there, 110-voltage heat pumps, clothes dryers, and hot water keepers that can save members a lot of money over time. And so these are ways to potentially offset and maybe be a little bit more ambitious with your public awareness and outreach programs to get into the homes of folks that are struggling so that we can make some of these changes. Be more proactive with vision and purposeful with your business-to-business communications, meaning, for example, I'm encouraging, have encouraged that you announce and you plan to electrify your fleet as fast as possible and to encourage other businesses to convert their fleets to electric also. I know Level 3 chargers on island are coming, but the rate of those, I know there's some challenges with that, but some of the new technology out there is going to require 1-megawatt chargers, and I think you need to have that sort of in your sights so that you can, again, try to electrify the entire island as fast as possible, get off fossil fuels as fast as possible, use your rates to steady as best as possible, and either reduce them or next, rate hikes longer or not as much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Next, actually, I'm going to ask you to take this mic over to Bridget Hammerquist. She's sitting right there.
Thank you for meeting us on Kauai. It is great to have you come. And I think there are people in the community that are the commercial users and the corporate developers, and they would not mind this particular rate increase as much because they're not actually bearing the brunt of it. Yes, there's an aggregate 9.4% impact, but if you study, and I know that the Consumer Advocate probably will, if you study the actual categories of rates, under the residential category, the rates that are offered as current rates and the proposed rate increases per kilowatt hour, show that the residential consumer is going to pay between 18.5% and 20% more per month than they're currently paying. The residential ratepayers are not going to have a 9.7% or 9.4% increase. And we actually had the application reviewed by a consumer advocate firm on the East Coast to get an independent determination. And I represent friends of Mahalabu. My name is Bridget Hammerquist, and I apologize for not saying that at the start. And we wanted to know the true impact. So basically, your residential ratepayers, your kapuna, your keki, our future residents on the island are going to have nearly a 19% rate increase, and it's way too much. I also say we should look very carefully at the rate application because there's some statements in it that are not true. And I think I encourage Mr. Rodriguez, and I'd like to meet with him later, I encourage people who actually know the operation of KIUC to come forward and give you every bit of information they can. I agree with the woman who testified that there are other ways that they can increase their revenue without having the residential ratepayers bear nearly a 20% rate hike. That's just too much in a very hard time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammerquist. Next is Ken Taylor. Mr. Taylor, take your time, sir.
Thank you for being here this evening for us. I have some real problems with this project. First of all, they tell us that it's going to save us money, that they're going to increase our rates in order to save us money. I don't quite understand how that works. That emperor has no clothes. We were told some years ago that solar was going to save us money. What it has brought us is increases in debt, it has increased our rates. We have saved nothing. A lot of this is being built on the false premise that global warming has to do with what man is doing. I think that is being proven incorrect. It's time for us to say no to more projects of this type. They're not saving us any money. They're only running a bit more debt and making a few contractors rich. And I think it's time for you folks to say no, thank you. The community doesn't need it. We need to take care of our streams, put the water and leave the water in the streams where it belongs, and get back to a good life here on the island. And it's up to you folks to understand the importance of the environment, and it's not this project, and it's not going to solve anything for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Before I go on to the folks online, is there anyone else here tonight present that wishes to testify? Okay. Do we have any--
Yes.
You want to come up? Mr. Yamani, Mike Yamani?
Mike Yamani, representing myself, lifelong resident of Kauai, currently residing in Kapau. First of all, I support this rate case. I think we can fairly say that rate cases is extremely complex. I think what was presented is just the tip of the iceberg, and there can be a lot of confusion and misinterpretation that can go around. I guess for me, when I look at the co-op, I look at the people that are governing it, our board of directors, which are elected. I look at these people that I work with, and I trust that, you have to trust someone, and I trust them to be in oversight of what, and hold accountable the staff and the CEO on what we do. So first of all, people can vote, they can come to the meetings, they can express all their views on the rate cases, all their concerns, and dialogue back and forth. They can vote, talk to the directors that they voted for directly. So there is a vehicle to talk about all these issues that everybody's bringing up right now. Secondly, having been retired from KIC and Kauai Electric, I can tell you personally with the staff from executive level down, and I also trust them, I believe what they're doing is what's best for the co-op. Might not be best, I appreciate the increases to individuals, and I appreciate that it can be sensitive, but I believe the staff and our board is looking out what's best for the cooperative as a whole. And by doing that, I believe they're making our co-op financially viable, able to have more grid resiliency, and provide reliable power and renewables, and provide a safe workplace for employees. Those are the reasons I support this rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamani. Do we have one person here? You want to come up? Just state your name, if you're a representative organization or yourself, and whether you support it or oppose it, and then get into your testimony. Thanks.
Lorraine Oster. Lorraine Oster, KIC member, and testifying for myself. What I'd like to see is a bit more transparency into the current expenses, especially regarding the hydro projects. There's a lot of controversy as to whether we need them, expense because of the age of them and maintenance and so forth. And if this rate hike is necessary to keep our long debt loan ratio and so forth, if it's needed for those projects that we need more money to loan, then I think the public might have a different opinion. So I'd like to see a little bit more breakdown and transparency about that. So I generally am not in favor of a large rate hike. If necessary, I think it should be broken down over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oster. Anyone else? Okay, anyone online? Do you have a bit? Do you have a bit? No one? Any folks?
There are some callers.
Callers, okay. Just want to make sure, anyone online there? All right, why don't we go to those who are calling in? And I'm going to ask our staff, I guess, to call them out. Who's the?
Who's the first person? It says caller user three.
Yeah, so we requested the callers to unmute.
Okay.
So anyone calling in, if you can unmute yourselves, I believe it's pressing star six on your phone. Star six, asterisk six, to unmute yourselves. And then, as you folks do, I guess I'll just have you say your name if you are representing an organization or yourself, and then your testimony.
It looks like all our... There's no audio for this person.
Bluetooth.
Oh, Bluetooth. It looks like all the called in, those who called in have dropped off or have left.
Okay. For those online or have called in, I'm going to ask that you folks submit your testimony in writing, if you do have testimony. One last chance, those in the room, if you wish to provide testimony tonight. Again, if you wish not to tonight, you can always write in to us to provide your comments in writing, either by email or snail mail. Just stop by our desk in the back and they will give you that information. So having heard all the testimony tonight, following the conclusion of this public hearing, the Commission and the Consumer Advocate will continue with their review of KIUC's request on this rate case application. The process will conclude with the Commission's issuance of its written decision. So with that, this concludes the public hearing for docket number 2022-0208. Thank you all for attending. We value your time and good evening.